Good evening, and welcome to the public hearing for the Oyster River Cooperative School District proposed 2012-13 budget. I'm gonna start by just pointing out our website. If you're viewing this at home, I understand this is being taped, you can find all the documents that I'm gonna go through on the website, down there, ORCSD.org. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear from the communities, and you're, the board is here to listen to your comments. They will be making a final decision on their budget tomorrow evening at their board meeting, and then bringing that forward at the deliberative session. So this is your opportunity to comment on the budget for 2012-13. The RSA, I just put that up there so you can see that we're required to hold at least one budget hearing. At this budget hearing, we're going to disclose the appropriations for the following year and discuss them. I'll go through a PowerPoint. I prepared this PowerPoint with some of the forms that are gonna be posted in the communities and at the schools. And talk about, the first one I'll talk about is the warrant article. They include, as I said, the annual meeting warrant, which will be signed again by the board at tomorrow's meeting, and the school budget form, the MS-26. Again, this is in regards to the budget year 2012-13. The presentation includes, as I said, the warrant, the MS-26, and also the default budget. Again, you can find these documents under public hearing right on the front rotator of the school website, if you're viewing this at home, or if you get home and you want to see them again. I do have a handout. If you didn't pick one up, there's some handouts of this presentation and these forms. I'm gonna start with the warrant. Those that relate to funding are in green. First two articles, standard articles, you vote for your moderator every year, and your three school board members. These two items won't be discussed at deliberative, but they will be on the ballot in March for the March voting. Oops, and this one? Nope, I didn't, okay. And again, I didn't update my slides, but tomorrow, this meeting was supposed to be held on Thursday, the board will be finalizing the warrant and the proposed budget for 2013. This is just a summary of the warrants. As I said, the green is the cost items. These are the cost items for this proposed 2012 school year. There's seven articles. Article three has no cost, article four, none, article five, $47,000. The operating budgets, $38,204,288, for a total of $38,251,288. We'll start with article three. Article three is for ORPAS collective bargaining agreement. ORPAS is the Oyster River paraprofessionals and support staff. We reached a tentative agreement with them for a new three-year contract. In year one, there are no costs associated with that. There's no salary increase for those paraprofessionals and the food service staff. We did make a change to the health insurance. The current health insurance driver, as we call it, is the Comp 100 Plan. We have changed that to the Matthew Thornton Plan, the HMO, and we anticipate a huge savings from making that change. The first year, we're going to bring that in at 97 percent of a single plan. I'd like to note that in this unit, we only offer single plans for full-time employees, so there's only, applies to single plans, which is all we offer, and then new hires will come in at 95 percent. Year two, for a total of $33,540, calls for a 25 cent increase for employees. They do not advance on a step. They do remain, gain their seniority, but it's a 25 cent increase across the board. And then the insurance will move to 95 percent of a single plan for all employees. Year three is a $52,718 increase, and the provisions of that year are just 35 cents an hour for all employees across the board. No step increase. Warrant article four, ORBDA, as we call them, Oyster River Bus Drivers Association collective bargaining agreement. Again, we reached a tentative agreement with Bus Drivers Association for a three-year Year one also has no cost associated with it. It calls for a 25 cent salary increase for all drivers across the board. Another change in health insurance plan to the Matthew Thornton Blue HMO plan at 90 percent. And then we also changed that plan to a different prescription co-pay, what we call a 10-20-45 co-pay plan. And then there's a health payout reduction for the drivers. They currently have a payout option if they choose not to take health insurance, and there's a reduction, and that gradually reduces over the three years of this contract, the first year, and there's no payout for new hires. So that was negotiated in this contract. Again, year two, there's no cost. That calls for a 25 cent increase with no step advance. Another reduction in the health insurance payout. And in both of those years, there's no cost even though there's an increase because of the change in the health insurance. We feel very good about the steps that were made by the Bus Drivers Association to help come to an agreement without any cost to the district. They recognize the need, and certainly we came through with a very good contract here for three years with the bus drivers and the paraprofessionals. Year three has a small cost of $5,346. It includes a 25 cent increase, and again, another year of reduction so that we level those payouts to all the employees over the course of the three years. In both of these articles, we'll have more information, more detail for our deliberative session. These are just quick overviews because, you know, I'm trying to just give you the basic information so you have an opportunity to comment at this meeting. Article five is sustainability initiatives. We have a new group from the warrant article last year. They've met, and they've recommended some cost-associated items that they'd like to put forward for sustainability. Again, this will be discussed more at deliberative session, but the total for those are $47,000. It includes energy audits, funds to purchase some local foods, biodiesel conversion for our buses, and some educational outreach. Article six is a petition warrant article, similar to the article you had on your warrant last year, just continuing the committee, the sustainability committee. And again, it was submitted by petition, and there's no cost associated with that. Article seven, the article that includes the operating budget. And I say operating budget, but essentially, it's three budgets altogether. It includes the general fund, we refer to as Fund 10, food service, Fund 21, federal funds, and then a small fund, it's more or less a pass-through. It allows us to receive donations and other grants that aren't through the federal government. And we just kind of put a placeholder in there so that we have, essentially have to appropriate everything, or make provisions to appropriate everything that we would spend on the district's end, even though it doesn't involve the taxpayer's support. And when I say taxpayer support, taxpayer money is what I basically mean. So the total budget we're bringing forward is $38,204,288. On the bottom, you'll see the detailed budget information. It's available on our website. It was posted back in October. It's actually, I have brought extra copies with me if anyone would like them. I put some over there. There's a lot of detail to the budget. It's, the budget itself is about 159 pages, lists salaries and the staff, right down to supplies that we purchase. So that, that's new this year. There's a, there's a lot out there, so if you're interested in that, you could find that on our website under budget information. And as I said, I have some extra copies here if you'd like them. This is some, an overview, some visuals, prepared, actually prepared by the ABC. Thank you, Rob, for putting this together. This just kind of gives you an idea of the general fund, that Fund 10, which is funded by taxpayers, where the money breaks down, where you see all of the different areas that we spend the money on. Obviously, the biggest category is salary and benefits. And that's pretty typical when you look at all school budgets. Ours here is around 79 percent, or $29.1 million. School expenses, those can include supplies and equipment. District expenses possibly includes our bonding and our SAU office. Insurances, those are all under district expenses. 5.7, 5.7 percent, $2.1 million. Maintenance expenses, 4.2 percent, or $1.6 million. Transportation, 1.9 percent, or 7 million, .7 million dollars. And technology at 1.2 percent, or .4 million dollars. And there's, adds up to 100 there. You can see the breakdown of our entire budget. This is just another visual that kind of compares where this budget, I didn't mention before, by the way, is more or less a flat budget. Our goal this year was to come in with a flat budget. It's pretty well flat. It's about $68,000 more than last year's budget, and it includes some increases. So, and this kind of shows how we were able to do that. We had some reductions and some increases in areas, so overall, we're only up by $68,000. And it just shows where those pluses and minuses are. This is another visual that shows you the trend of where, where our budget has been trending. You can see, for the most part, we'd like to see that flat, and it looks like we're trending in that direction. If we continue to budget at a flat level, if that's within our reason, and we can continue to do that, that's, that's where we're heading. Again, salaries and benefits being the biggest part of the budget, and then the operating expenses, they're smaller part of the budget. And you can see that we have four years down there to show you that comparison. And this, again, is the general fund only. This shows you by school where, where the money is divided out. Typically, high schools are more expensive than elementaries and middle schools, so that's certainly not out of line. But that just gives you a visual of where, what percentage of the budget is spent on each school. Again, this is another four-year trend of where, where the budget has been heading over the course of four years in regards to each school. Different lines represent the different schools. And now, this is just the tax impact based on the comparison between the last year's and this year's in the three communities, the current levels. You'd be looking, if this budget passes, 41 cents in Durham, 56 cents in Lee, and 47 cents in Madberry. I talked about it being a flat budget, but unfortunately, when your revenues are reduced, you don't see no tax increase. And where we're on revenue end, on our end, is the fund balance. We've had a huge fund balance over the last couple of years, estimating about $1 million in fund balance this year, and the impact of that is less revenue. So these are the increases that would be associated with the proposed budget. And again, these are conservative, and assuming everything stays the same. For the most part, appropriations and assessments go up, but that's not unusual for them to go down, and that did happen a couple of years here. So I'm hoping that these are, these will be even less than, than what I proposed here. This gives you a scenario of if you were to own a house for $200,000 and $400,000 in each of the three communities, and what you'd be looking at for an annual increase in your tax bill. You'd be looking at $82 in Durham, 106, for a $200,000. For a $400,000 home, you'd be looking at $163. In Lee, $200,000 home would be $112. $400,000 home would be $224. Madberry would be 93 for the $200,000 home, and $187,000, $187 for a $400,000 home. This, actually, there's a little tax estimator, thinking, here it is, right here, that's posted on our website. And this, again, is thanks to the ABC Committee. It allows you to put in your actual assessment on your home and calculate what your taxes would be, and that's based on the current budget. And then you can put in your own scenarios, if, you know, there were changes in the budget, what that might result in for your taxes. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about the MS-26 form, and I talk about this because this is the form that we're required to post. It brings everything together on, I think it's a five or six-page form, and it can be very confusing for people to try to sort it out. It brings, in column one, and I'm looking, if you're looking at the document, you have it in your handouts there, there's account numbers, which are function levels. There's a name, it tells you what that account means. Column four has our actual expenditures from last year. So you can see that comparison of what we expended last year. And in column five, you'll see what we have budgeted this year. And in column six, you'll see what we're proposing for next year. So you can see those comparisons across the line. Page three includes warrant articles, special warrant articles, petition warrant articles, bonds or notes, capital reserves. This year, we don't have any, but I just wanted to let you know that's what that would be for. Again, on page three and section two, individual warrant articles. That's where you would see the collective bargaining agreements, the negotiated labor agreements would show up on page three. And again, warrants three and four are individual warrant articles, those two collective bargaining Page four and five are revenues. Again, you have the account numbers, the source, where those revenues are coming from. The actual we received last year, the projected for 2012, and the estimated for 2013. And as I indicated to you before, you'll see the one that causes, because our budget's only up by $68,000, you would expect, you would think that there would be no increase in taxes, but because our fund balance has gradually reduced over the years, that's where the impact is coming from. And you can see that across the line on, in that column. You can see those three years where we've gone from a 2-point, I think it's a 2.2 million to a 1.5, down to a million dollars. Page five is the budget summary. And again, when I talk about operating budgets, it brings all of them together. Here they are. Here's where I talked about the $68,000 increase. That's the dollar increase. It's about .178 percent increase, decrease, excuse me. Should've been increase. It is decrease, I'm sorry. Again, I talk about operating budgets, and I want to make sure people are clear on that. It's, Fund 21 is food service fund. They'll receive a transfer from Fund 10. Fund 22 and 23 do not affect property taxes. Those are your federal funds and any donations we receive. Again, it's funded by federal grants. Fund 23 is from state and other grants. And Fund 10 is known, again, as the general fund, and it's supported primarily by property taxes. And the collective bargaining agreements and any warrant articles become part of Fund 10 once they're voted in and approved. Now I'm gonna talk about default budget. This is the definition of the default budget. In your handout, you have a copy of that. Again, this document will be posted in the three communities and at the schools. Basically means the, you're allowed, when you calculate default budget, it's the amount that was in your operating budget that was authorized last year. It's reduced or increased, as the case may be, by debt. We did reduce it because our bonds change every year, they go down. Contracts and other obligations previously incurred are mandated by law. So anything that would have an increase would be associated with a contract, a negotiated agreement, or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures. In the case of this year, you'll see the reduction for the capital improvements plan, the CIP. This is a breakdown of the default. And again, a couple, I've reduced, Fund 21, Fund 22, I've reduced that, and basically the reason for that reduction is for the stimulus IRA funds. In reality, I could've left that, but ideally, we won't be receiving any more stimulus funds. And that $700,000 represents close to what we're receiving this year. The timeline, I put up there the public hearing. Again, I mentioned that tomorrow evening, the school board will finalize their budget and their warrant to bring forward at the deliberative session. February 7th is the deliberative session. It will be held here, same time. We have a candidate's night on February 21st, and March 13th is the annual meeting, voting, ballot session. Under Senate Bill 2, we'll be voting, official voting on the 13th of March. We've already passed the petition warrant articles, but I just wanted you to know, put that out there. Filing period for board candidates, January 25th through February 3rd. And we will be posting all of this information on the 23rd. And that's actually all I have. I didn't want to take a lot of time because this hearing is for the purpose of hearing from the public, so I'm gonna open it up. There's a mic up front here, if you want to come up, and the board will listen to your comments. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
My name is Joe Hennig. And I happen to come to previous meetings, but I came here to talk about the cost of nursing in the Oyster River School District. I looked at the 2011, 2012 budget, and the cost of providing nurses in the school district was $447,825.80, according to your budget. It turns, it turns out that we have, at the high school, a nurse and a secretary. At the middle school, we have a nurse and a paranurse. At the Moheramit School, we have a nurse, and at Mastway School, we have a nurse. I'd like to know why the middle school needs a paranurse, and why the high school needs a nurse secretary. I'd like to know why the middle school, the Mastway School nurse should make $74,000, and the Moheramit nurse make $54,000 for taking care of the same kind of children. And I would like to know what the board has done to look into these costs. Thank you, and I would appreciate an answer.
David Taylor Durham. I'm impressed that the budget this year is significantly less than the budget last year. Usually, with some inflation, there's an increase, but your presentation didn't list any of the cuts that you've made. Could you give details on what cuts you've made to achieve that decrease in actual budget?
Should I go? Dean Rubine, Lee. I've been to a lot of these meetings. I, I wanna go over Roger Spidey's numbers and present them in a sort of more typical form, and, well, we'll see what conclusion we reach. In 2000, I'm eyeballing it from Mike McClurkin's table here, it looks like the cost per pupil for Oyster River was around $7,000, and from hearing Roger say it over and over, that was 350-something dollars above the state. When I divide 350 into 7,000, that's about 5 percent over the state's average. In 2012, the numbers were 12,214 for the state, and 1,505.03 as our cost per pupil, which is 27 percent over the state's number. So in 10 years, we've gone from 5 percent over the state's budget to 27 percent over the state's budget. That's not a thousand percent increase, it's a 22 percent increase, which over 11 years basically means we've, we've spent 2 percent, we've gone up 2 percent over the state each successive year, approximately. Now, to me, this is bad, but it's, it's not a terrible tragedy. I don't see the reason to be pulling our hair out. As a matter of fact, if we just stay a few percent under the state for a few years, we'll, we'll get back to date. So I guess my main point here is we're not in a super terrible crisis. We have an issue. I think what we need is a plan for gradually reducing our budget to be more in line to what it used to be. But the important thing we have to remember is, of course, to keep the quality of the schools up. It's pretty clear, I've been asking around, most people move to this district because they want their kids to go to good schools. And as a result of that, the property values are high because there's demand to live here because the schools are good. Now, we could very easily, in our zeal to try to save some money, we could very easily trash the school district and then destroy all our property values. And I would, of course, urge against that.
Hi, Jennifer Reeve Durham. I have two comments. The first comment I'd like to make is about the proposed cut for the assistant principal at the high school. I haven't really heard much discussion about the impact from the board about what this cut will eventually, proposed cut will eventually have on the high school. We've heard from Todd Allen briefly at one school board meeting, but I'd like to, perhaps tomorrow night, just hear some more from board members about some of the either sacrifices or compromises that are gonna need to be made with this proposed cut. I sort of feel like it's just been cut, and there really hasn't been much discussion from the board about this. My second comment has to do with the ORPAS current contract. Two questions. Does the 25 cent increase, does that include the food service workers? And my second question has to do with the current contract on page 12, under health insurance, number three. There's a health reimbursement account for the food service employees, and in the last year of this contract, they were given a $2,500 stipend, and I believe that was to 13 or 14 employees. So my question is, will that be continuing on in this contract, or will food service employees not have a health insurance reimbursement account?
Denise Day Durham. And I am also interested in hearing more from the board about the proposed cuts, in particular to the high school. Someone looking at the budget and might look at it and say, gee, level funded, everything stays about the status quo, but in reality, I know that the proposed budget includes a math tutor in, in the budget that was not in the regular operating budget last year. So that's an increase at the elementary level, while eliminating an assistant principal position at the high school, halftime math position at the high school, and also a technology integrator position for the district. And I am particularly concerned about the elimination of an assistant principal and what that does in terms of both faculty supervision and student, student coverage, discipline, interacting with, with kids that may have some special situations that really need a little TLC, and how one assistant principal is going to be able to handle that for six, over 600 students. So I'm really concerned about that, and would really like to hear more from the board about it.
Hi, Lorna Ellis Durham. I can't come on Wednesday nights, but I have watched all the school board meetings, and I've been really dismayed at what's felt like a haphazard cuts at the last minute. I'm particularly concerned about the high school cuts. The long-range planning doesn't look like the high school is diminishing drastically till four years from now, which gives- till four years from now, which gives plenty of time for a five-year plan for how we can consider what to do unless we fill those spots with students from other towns, in which case we wouldn't need to do that. I'm especially concerned about the math position. And I just feel, having watched the candidates' nights last year, I did not see this coming. I feel really quite betrayed that there were these last-minute, to me, felt like last-minute cuts. The end result looks, you know, oh, it's not drastic. But if you look at the high school, I think it really is.
Hi, Kenny Rotner from Durham. I'd like to echo some of the comments that have been made before. I feel that as a district, it certainly is wise if we come up with strategy to try to plan where we'd like to be in the future. I think that if we look at trying to cut expenses, if we feel that enrollments will be declining at some point, to have a master plan to achieve that through teacher retirements, I think that's a sensible way to go. I think the cuts that have been proposed this year and which the board is now supporting really don't make any sense for me. I hear on one hand, you're talking about trying to increase the number of students coming from districts such as Barrington, but yet you're cutting people that I think are key to support having those students come. The role of assistant principal is huge. If we're talking about evaluating teachers, we're talking about making sure kids are where they need to be, to lose that assistant principal makes that job much harder. It falls on two people who I think are already overwhelmed. Coupled with the cutting of the tech advisor, one hand, we're talking about moving towards more of a paperless school. That means more tech. I think that the administrators are people who are going to have to step into providing that tech. Again, cutting someone makes no sense. I'm very disturbed about the cutting of the math teacher, the .5 position, even though that is someone who's retiring and by the model, maybe someone retires to go. I don't think the impact of that has really been looked at. The classes she teaches is an AP class. She teaches higher-level kids. Those classes are still going to need to be taught. The impact is going to come down on the kids that really, really need that more personal attention. You look at introductory geometry-level courses, algebra courses, they're really, really difficult for a lot of kids to grasp. Class size is going to go up because the classes that the .5 is now covering will be covered, and therefore, it's going to draw from people, the person who's teaching the lower-level classes. I think that's really counterintuitive to what we're hoping for in improving education in our district. The last point was with process. You have a leadership team, and at a board meeting, one of you mentioned you had wanted input, that instead of people coming to criticize the board, you really wanted to have input, you wanted to have constructive comments. And I've watched how you've had a leadership team come and tell you what the impact of losing an assistant principal is, losing a .5 math teacher, losing a tech advisor, things like that, and still those actions were taken. It's hard for me to reconcile that desire for input when that input is ignored from people with that expertise.
John Collins from Lee. First, a comment on tonight. I remember these as more of a back-and-forth, where if someone asks questions, they get an answer, like, what's the story with the nurses? Just like one of those quizzes on the cereal box where, at the end, we turn it upside down and we get all the answers really quickly, one after the other. I would like to speak to process as well. I have the saying that what you really want is, what's important is the product, not the process. And the goal here is a quality budget that meets the educational needs of the district, the schools, the teachers, the students, while at the same time mindful of taxpayers. Your job is to craft such a budget and then to convince the voters to support it. Instead, what I've seen is an inordinate focus on process for the past year or more, and even more on the appearance, trying to project the appearance of a better, more transparent process, when in fact, the budget has always been improvements in how it's presented and the document up there, which I haven't looked at yet, maybe improvements. But in the end, it's the product that really matters. You build a process, you included the ABC with a significant role. So in the end, what do we get? You ignored the ABC in the end. You ignored your building administrators, you ignored your superintendent. Two board members went in, picked some things they didn't like, made their own cuts, crafted Meghan's budget, and with no input. So what we're left with is we're facing a battle between two factions of the public at deliberative session. I would argue and admit, as a member of the public, maybe the people least informed about the details of the budget, the needs, and why this is needed and why this is in the budget. So again, to craft a quality budget and gain the confidence of the public is what you needed to do, and you certainly haven't done that. So in the end, the process stinks, and the product, I mean, it's almost like, might as well draw it out of the hat. Who knows what's going to happen by the end of the night at deliberative session?
Paul Gazowski, Lee. First, I am speaking as an individual, and I haven't spoken very much this year. I have two comments. I would strongly urge you to reinstate that assistant principal at the high school. I taught in this building for 33 years, four years in the newer structure, which is far larger than the previous building. But in both configurations, it's hard for me to imagine, especially in these times, how one principal and one assistant principal can manage all of this. So I appreciate the economics of the situation, but this is an error. And some folks, it's going to put an awful lot of stress on a lot of folks and on our student body, and you really should reconsider that. So I would urge you to do that. Second, in the 11th hour, there was a cut to computers. And I would like to know the impact that that particular cut has on the district's technology plan. And this is something that I haven't even looked at myself. I'm assuming that in that technology plan, there's an articulated method for acquiring computers, upstreaming and downstreaming computers. I'm pretty sure there is. So it would be helpful to see the logic behind that cut.
Henry Smith from Durham. I had a question, informative question. The mathematics teacher that's proposed to be cut, is this person retiring? That, all right, thank you. That was something I didn't know. I would like to commend you for delving into and scrutinizing the budget in fine detail, maybe with the fine tooth comb, for all I know, and doing what I believe is a reasonable and fair thing with the budget, arriving at the end of either level funding the budget or reducing the budget, given the fact that we've seen increases for years and years with decreasing enrollments, and in spite of the fact that our school district has not improved. We are a school district in need of improvement, and throwing all this money at it apparently hasn't helped very much. So I want to commend you for what I believe to be a thoughtful and reasonable budget, and I urge you to adopt the budget that you yourselves have come up with, I believe not haphazardly, but thoughtfully. And I want to just address the fact that there's another issue here that has come up before. I listened to the testimony at the December meeting of December 7th, and there were people who said that they didn't mind paying more and more every year in their taxes for increasing the budget. But one person, who is a longtime wonderful, outstanding employee of the town of Durham, testified briefly but eloquently by saying that she had had no raise for two years and that she was struggling, they were struggling to meet their mortgage, to pay their property taxes, and to keep their house. And I point out something you probably know, that there are people in Durham struggling increasingly with these increasing taxes as to how to make ends meet and to survive and keep their homes and pay their taxes. And I think that's a sensitive subject. Social Security recipients went two consecutive years with no increase, and I believe that the school district can also. So I affirm what you've done, and thank you for your efforts.
Good evening. Lucy Gardner, Durham. I also applaud your efforts, and I hope that you will do what the rest of the categories on our tax bill do. You, the school system, represent 64% of every Durhamite's tax bill. I don't know what the other tax bills look like. 64% of the raise that we all got on our last bill was the school system. The school budget has gone up every single year despite the declining enrollment, as Henry Smith said. But after you take away the 64% and the 9% that goes to the county, 26% of every Durhamite's budget is everything else. Everything else, the police, the firemen, the library, Todd Selick and everybody who works at Town Hall, every single other thing. And their rise in spending for next year is half of what the proposed rise here is. And it has nothing to do with the individual departments, because the departments have all been asked to do level budgets, submit level budgets. The library, everybody, every department. I urge you to do what the rest of the town is coping with.
Hello. I'm Nikki Galacce from Durham. And first, I want to applaud you for restoring the math coach position and restoring the counselor position at the middle school, both of which I think are vitally important to students' education. What I am concerned about, however, is the continued attempt to chip away at the budget in little ways. If you're going to cut paper, don't cut laptops. And if you're going to cut laptops, don't cut paper. You can't simply starve the school of essential supplies. I worry about reductions in the bus maintenance budget. You've decided to put off replacing old buses with new buses. Sensible, I understand that. But if you're going to have a fleet of old buses, don't reduce the maintenance budget. I worry about the reduction of the AP math teacher at the high school. And I feel that this district, while it's clear that many people in the district feel that the school budget needs to be reduced, I would really like and ask the school board to think about doing this in the future in a more systematic way. Perhaps we need a consulting firm to come in and say, how did our budget get here, and how can we reduce it with minimal impact on students, and also to those district employees who often came here quitting other jobs, relocating their families to come and live and work in our district. We also have a responsibility to the many parents who moved to the district for the sake of their children's education, whether those children be gifted children or disabled children who needed special ed. And we have very good facilities for both of those constituents. So I understand that the budget is high. I understand everybody is looking for reductions. But really, I applaud you for what you've restored, and I would ask you to restore even more.
Hi, Sarah Farwell, Lee. What I've noticed in the past year, watching you guys with everything, I think that it's clear, especially with this budget, there are no easy decisions. Mr. Levesque said back at the December meeting, there is no hidden pot of gold in the budgets. And I think that what everybody needs to be clear on and be realistic about is the fact that every decision you make and every cut that is made or everything that is added in is going to impact our kids' educations and people's real estate values. It's not like they're stuff being wasted. And I know that there's been some discussion on class sizes and, you know, 12.6, you know, kids in each high school class or in some high school classes are average, whatever. That comes with some flexibility and some freedom. So our high school kids have more options for classes than other schools do. And I mean, it's a very complex issue. I know you all understand that. But I think that the helpful thing is to not just throw out statistics that are misleading. But back to the budget piece, I guess what the community needs to decide is if we can live with the cuts that are being suggested. And, you know, we can all, I think everybody sees that some cuts may need to be made, but I would go back to what I asked in early December, and that would be that you please go back to the budget that Mr. Levesque initially proposed, and not add things into that. But go back to that, because I do feel that that was the most well-thought-out of any of the budgets, the least cherry-picked, the least, you know, I don't want to lose this for my kid kind of budget. So, thank you.
Okay, Morgan Durham. I'd like to echo many other people's sentiments, and especially what Sarah just said. I think the first budget we were shown was probably the one that was the most thoughtfully produced. I haven't heard no justification for cutting the assistant principal at the high school or the technology person who helps throughout the district as we try to become a school of the 21st century. So without those justifications, in fact, in the face of the ABC Committee's recommendation that the best approach would be to increase the number of tuition students at the high school, which surely would, I would say, justify the saving of the assistant principal position, in the face of even those recommendations, we've seen cuts that seem to have no, at least no rationale presented for them. So yes, I'm a taxpayer in the district, and when I worked here, usually every cent of whatever raise I had went to pay my higher tax bill. So I certainly would applaud the effort to save all of us taxpayers' money, but I hate to see cuts that appear to be somewhat random, I guess. And I would agree that that earliest budget was the most thoughtful of any of them.
Katie Ellis from Durham. I am another voice wanting to encourage you to add back in the assistant principal and support for the math program at the high school. At a time when the students are being required to take more math rather than less, regardless of what level of the course it is, I don't think we can afford to lose the position. I appreciate that someone is retiring, and it seems like a good time, but I think the timing is wrong. Maybe in a few years, if we have fewer students, that might be a time to consider it. If we end up having more tuition students instead, maybe it still wouldn't be the right time. And again, for the same reason, I think we need the assistant principal. It's a very great thing at this school that our students have the freedom to go outside the building at lunchtime. It would be awful if that were taken away from them to save, I don't know how much. I'm not sure. The other point that I wanted to make is that I feel that some of the cuts that are proposed right now are really just deferred savings. I'm not sure it's worth it. I think deferred maintenance is a very slippery slope. So the technology cuts in technology objects, let alone the person, and the maintenance cuts, I think, I think it's going to cost us more down the road if we don't keep up with the new budget. cuts, I think it's going to cost us more down the road if we don't keep up with the costs as time goes by. And so I think you're just deferring that and making it more expensive later. Thank you.
I'm probably jumping the gun here, but I got out of my nice warm house tonight to come and try to learn a little bit more about the budget. And I've heard three or four questions answered, and I'm not quite, this isn't a regular school board meeting, this is a budget hearing. So I'm wondering when we'll get the answers? I mean, do we have to dig them all out ourselves? Or will you answer them tomorrow night at tomorrow night's meeting? That's my question.
Yes, the board will be meeting tomorrow night, and they'll answer your questions.
And in full disclosure, my wife is the nurse at the high school. And I would like to just clarify one item on the very first announcement, and that is that there is not a halftime secretary for the nurse. My understanding is last year there was, this year there is not a halftime secretary. That was a split position with the athletic department, and the athletic department also does not have a halftime secretary this year.
Any additional comments? Thoughts? Okay. Right. In regards to the cuts and the information that has been disclosed this evening, it's all posted on the website. I think one of the questions that came up were those cuts that were made by the board. Those are all posted on our website. I believe they're under Budget, the Budget section on the front page of the website. You'll find that information.
I find it really crazy that you're not answering the questions, and I find it crazy that you've given this presentation and you haven't listed specifically what the cuts are so that people at home can see them and comment about them. I would also like to echo the comments of other people. I think the most thoughtful budget that came forward in this process is the one that Superintendent Levesque presented back in October. And I encourage you to go back to that budget. That budget had the support of the administrators and much of the community. It was a very level, thoughtful budget. The, you know, last-minute $500,000 cuts that came out of nowhere, the Megan's budget that came out of nowhere. These are all just crazy processes that nobody supports. And I really recommend you go back to a budget that has some thought behind it. Thank you.
Can't help but remember William Hall, Durham, that I was watching a school budget meeting, and one of the members showed up and said, "I think we should have a 1.7 percent increase this year." And they already had a multimillion-dollar overrun from the year before in surplus, and they had a similar surplus that year when the person said 1.7. So the past school board is probably the most responsible for the budget getting out of control. I noticed in the paper tonight that Berwick has a problem with overcrowding at its school. Dover has increased by 100 and something and sees more increases going. Durham has a decline in the high school alone. The decline is going to be in the next six years, about 90 students. The reason that Durham is declining in the student population is that people are having trouble affording their families, being able to finance their home, their retirement, et cetera. And so what's happened is that the school board, in their increasing budgets, has essentially shot the school district in the foot by not recognizing the fact that many people cannot support the taxes that they are faced with or don't wish to support them. And I know people that have just plain moved out of Durham, not so much the taxes, because they've got very good retirements, but they just don't like the somewhat irrational approach. Another thing, a while ago, I did some little bit of work on my own and found out that from multiple sources that didn't know each other, that things are not all rosy in the classroom at Oyster River. In one case, a parent was paying to send a student to another school. And I asked, "Well, I've heard that half the people aren't paying attention, or half the people are paying attention, and the other half are in the back of the room eating and talking." And the student who was going to, I believe, Berwick Academy said, "I'd be surprised if half the people were paying attention." So they might as well cut the second assistant principal, because it hasn't been working. And this goes back over a number of years. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Sue. Oh, sorry, Sarah Farwell-Lee, because this was really so clear and very easy to understand. So thank you.
And the former speaker motivated me to come up here. This got to stop. We cannot keep dissing our school system on rumors. I have two children, two grandchildren, at Oyster River High School. They love it. I want them to keep loving it. I do not want them to keep getting the rumors that this is not a good system. If that keeps up, there will be one angry grandma in Lee. And it's the board's responsibility to be the liaison with the community and sell it as the good system that it is. Thank you.
I'd like to commend the school board for doing a very good job. The problem we have in the Oyster River School District is there are a bunch of people who want to maintain the status quo, and we need, the status quo isn't all right. We're paying high taxes. We should have better education. And I'm looking for the school board to raise the level of education in the district without increasing the cost. And I'm sure they know how to do it. Thank you.
I'm a resident, and this is the first time I've been, I essentially internally called to come to one of these meetings, let alone speak. I guess the one thing I would like to think as we move forward, we all appreciate the difficult decisions that need to be made. But one of the responsibilities with leadership is not just making difficult decisions, but it's entraining the population in how those decisions are made. And what I'm hearing tonight is that a large percentage of our population have not been entrained in those decisions. And so I would urge the board, as they consider their responses for tomorrow night, to answer those people.
My second time here, so I'll be very quick. We often get here that we're a district in need of improvement and a school in need of improvement. And out of context, that sounds pretty terrible. But the No Child Left Behind law, basically, each year has a threshold of proficiency. I think this past year was 92 or 94 percent of the students needed to be proficient. I only know about masked way. I think masked way, the special ed students failed to be proficient this year. I think they scored 84 percent proficiency. And I would guess this was around a dozen kids on a test. And presumably, this would be, they're taking the same test as everybody else, and they essentially scored 84 percent, which is, sounds reasonably pretty good for a special ed population. And it's not bad, but it caused us to be labeled in need of improvement, because they were not up to 94 or 92, whatever the number was. By 2014, that number will be 100 percent, and I'm pretty sure that 100 percent of the schools in the country will be deficient. So the fact that we're in need of improvement, it sounds much worse than it is. I think it's probably about half the schools that are in need of improvement now by this sort of arbitrary measure.
John Collins from Lee. I was also going to speak to the CINNIE, the Schools in Need of Improvement. I mean, it's even better than that, that you have to improve each year from the year before, and they don't compare the third graders of one year with that group the next year when they're in fourth grade. They compare with a completely different set of students. So if you happen to have a higher-performing class and then a lower performing, you have no way that you're going to meet the standards of improvement. So, I mean, most people in the country, if all political and philosophical persuasions agree that No Child Left Behind is the thing that's really in need of improvement. The other comment I want to make is this notion that there's a mandate, that something's got to stop, that things are out of control. I just point out that for as long as there's been in Oyster River, the voters go to the polls every year and resoundingly support, vote in favor of the budget that the board presents. So where is this, where does this notion come from? There is a long history of the voters of this district supporting the budgets that the board presents.
I have a question and then a comment. First, the question. I'm sure you all know that there's a new state law that mandates, that allows parents to remove their kids from certain curricular topics, essentially whatever they would like to have their kids taken out of, and that also mandates that the teachers and administrators work with the parents to come up with an appropriate substitute curriculum. And of course, there are time demands associated with that and energy demands associated with those requests. And since there is no curriculum coordinator here at the high school, I am curious as to what that, or what consideration of that new state law went into your, or how much consideration of that state law went into your discussions about removing an assistant principal position here at the high school? That's my question. My comment is that for years, as far back as I can remember, people have come to budget hearings expecting to say things and hear answers. And unless I'm misremembering badly, that's always the way it's happened. Now, I understand that you've told us that questions will be answered tomorrow evening. I'm sure that not every single person who's in this room right now is available to come tomorrow evening. But if they all did, and I'm going to guess that tomorrow evening's meeting is back in your little room down there in the building. Can you tell me whether I'm right or wrong on that? Are you having that meeting down there or here?
No, it's in the board room.
Back down there? Okay. So obviously, if every single person in this meager crowd showed up, it would overload that room. And then you have other people who will be at that meeting just because of typical attendance. So you've got people who are not going to be able to hear the answers to the questions. Yes, I know they can watch it on TV. That's not quite the same. People came this evening expecting to be able to say things and to hear answers to their questions and other people's questions. And it's very disconcerting to me to not have that take place. I mean, we've got people talking, and then we've got a mute set of people up there who are nodding their heads, shaking their heads, whatever they're doing, but there's no answer coming. And that's, it's disconcerting, and it's baffling, and it's annoying. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Yeah, sure.
I also wondered about the format this evening and was surprised when we came in and there weren't microphones. So I also asked the question, "Why are we doing a different format tonight?" Evidently, we're trying this different format. Many of the questions that have been asked this evening involve research. I'm not sure how many questions Sue has at her fingertips. The questions about the technology plan in particular, seems like that's something that we would need to talk to someone else about. So I guess regarding the answers, I would suggest that for those of you who are unable to watch the board meeting tomorrow night, that perhaps, I have the list of questions. We can summarize that and have that available either prior to the board meeting, I'm not sure if that's possible, or right after the board meeting, so that all these questions will be answered and on the website in the detail that they deserve. And I don't know if any other board members want to weigh in or the superintendent, but that would be my suggestion, so that people who want their answers, and these are really good questions and in some cases require research, will have a question and answer sheet based on this, and perhaps it could be labeled that way on our website. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in, but that's my suggestion.
We're trying to keep this format as a hearing. Someone once said, "God gave you two ears and one mouth, and you ought to use them accordingly." So we're trying to listen a lot more than we speak. I'm taking notes, trying to jot down the questions. I would very much appreciate, sir, if you would repeat your questions so I can wrap my mind around it. It was a pretty extensive question, and I'd like to do that, so we can all take notes and make some sensible comments on them. But the reason we are not responding, because this is a hearing, it hasn't been set up as a dialogue, we're listening to you. The fact that we sit up here mute is a testament of the fact that we're keeping our mouths shut and our ears open. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Jocelyn informed me that she got the question, so she'll share it with me, and we can work on an answer on it. Thank you. Thank you.
A comment about Jocelyn's comment that, I guess, is just the point. Well, and about what Mr. Katch said. For me, that's the problem, there's no dialogue. The difference between a regular board meeting where there are comments by public that are, you say something and the board listens, at the budget hearing that I remember in the past, certainly the deliberative session, you can ask a question, it's addressed, you can follow it up with detail or a clarification. So there is a dialogue, and that's the importance of it, at least in my opinion. And in terms of you, Board Member O'Quinn, you, as your example, used exactly the one I was going to use, and that is the technology budget. See, what I would like to know is not what you guys can research and tell us that you learned between now and tomorrow night. I'd like to know what the two board members who decided to slash that $50,000, I'd like to know what they knew at the time they made that decision. And for the rest of you, I'd like to know what you knew at the time that you voted in favor of slashing that. I don't want to know what you can find now and spin it. I'd like to know, that would inform us of the process and how informed some of these cuts have been.
Jocelyn suggested that this is sort of an experiment, and I just want to say, I don't like it, and I, please, let's go back to having an actual discussion sometime.
Jennifer Reeve, Durham. I just want to echo how odd this evening has been. In past years, it's the board that presents the budget, not your business administrator. It's the board's budget, and you allow your business administrator to answer questions. And there's a process outlined how the principal deals with working with the parents in that case. As far as the question regarding technology and the cut with computers, it certainly does delay the implementation and replacement of the hardware that was outlined in its... In the original request. So it's delaying the replacement at this point. In regard to the health insurance, I think Sue could probably comment upon... Maybe you could just clarify that piece right now with the food service? Okay? And then we'll let the gentleman speak.
In regards to the contract with ORPAS, it does include food service. They will be receiving a raise, and it does maintain the current level for the FSA account that they have. So I just outlined the changes. So those are maintained, and it does include food service.
Kenny Rotner, once again from Durham. Just following up with what Lee said, I think the question about the new state law isn't so much that there'll be a policy. It's mandated that there be a policy. I think it was pointing out that it might put a big burden on the schools, and that by having that burden, who is going to pick up that responsibility? My comment was coming to speak to Jim Ketch commenting about your all ears tonight. And I want to believe that. I think back, though, to the meeting where the $500,000 budget cut was presented, which included the assistant principal cut, the .5 math cut. And if I remember that meeting well, the week before the meeting, thirty-six letters were received by the board. Thirty-five were against the cuts. At that meeting, there was an overflow crowd. The boardroom was filled. People were watching on the satellite TV. Keeping track of comments there, they were probably fifteen to one against the cuts for Reed stating what had been removed. Maybe you were listening, but I don't think you were processing. And thinking of that last meeting I attended where the deliberative session was going to get switched, and comments were made about... Someone came up to me, or two people came up to me and said that Saturdays are easier. It makes me feel back about the times of Nixon's silent majority, where you're identifying this constituency that you're representing, but if you listen to the people here tonight, people are saying, we want that assistant principal. So I hope that you really are listening and processing and really respecting the people in the community who are speaking. Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that I've gotten a response about the assistant principal position. My question, as Kenny pointed out, my question was not about whether there is a policy or not. My question was what consideration was given to the new state law during your discussions about cutting an assistant principal? And to my other point about not getting any feedback from the board this evening, I understand that there are some questions that need to be discussed before answers can be given. That's always been the case. There have always been questions that have to be researched, that have to be discussed by board members before it's practical or board members or administration are comfortable giving answers to those. And in situations like that in past years, we've always been told, we'll research that, and we will answer that at the next board meeting or whenever the appropriate time is. So I guess I would like to see a return to that sort of a format, because that's what we came here this evening expecting, that at least some of the questions would be answered. Now, you folks on the board have been criticized heavily over the last few months for allegedly not communicating very well. And unfortunately, you're adding fuel to that fire by declining to answer questions here, at least the questions that you can answer here this evening. And quite frankly, with all due respect, I think it's inconsiderate. I really do. People were looking for answers. I have to assume that at least some of these questions could have been answered here this evening. And I just don't think that this is a very open and forthright policy to be following. Thank you.
I'm going to take a stab at a few, John, to help you out here tonight. I'm going to try to answer a few that I can. I'm going to start with a high school principal question. I don't know if everybody saw the meeting and I certain... Or the high school assistant principal position. I don't want to put Mr. Allen on the spot because he's not here to speak tonight. I assume he'll be at our meeting tomorrow night. But the board did have discussions regarding that. I think that's left... I think that's best left for our meeting tomorrow night. What I can hit on is the math teacher position at the high school that we did have extensive discussions on. And in those discussions, I believe Mr. Allen participated, and we were told or decided that we would continue to offer the AAP course that has been offered, and that students would be moved around into classes and accommodated. And it would not... Students would not be prevented from taking any classes because of this change. That's my recollection of that discussion. Regarding the comment about delaying replacing old buses, I have not heard that. I don't think that's correct. I don't think we made that decision. So we can correct that right here. The board has not decided to delay replacing old buses. We have actually decided to include new buses in the budget. So let's see, what else is on here? The items that were decreased, I think Sue has mentioned that that's on the website. If people want to go look at a list to it, we can revisit it tomorrow night as well. We've addressed the ORPAS questions. John, your specific question about the law... The change in law about teachers and administrators having to create substitute curriculum as requested by parents. To my knowledge, the board has not discussed that, but there may have been other discussions within the administration, and I'll wait for them to have that discussion tomorrow night. And if the board hasn't discussed it, then I guess that would be a good time to do so. So thanks for bringing that question up, and that's all I'm going to take a stab at tonight. But I hope that's helpful. And again, I think for the people who have questions, I hope that you can tune into the board meeting tomorrow night. And if not, we'll have the detailed information on our website, if everyone's willing to do that. Thanks.
Denise Day, Durham. And I do appreciate, thank you, for attempting to answer some of the questions. But I guess I would say that, you know, my recollection was that Superintendent Levesque was looking for some guidance from the board earlier in the fall in terms of what kind of bottom line budget the board wanted, and not hearing anything until the eleventh hour of suddenly it was a $500,000 cut. And at that point, yes, he went back to the administrators to say, you know, we've got to cut something. So yes, you know, Mr. Allen came up with the .5 math, the assistant principal, given that, you know, there was a mandate to meet $500,000 of cuts. That came at the eleventh hour. That was not, from my point of view, certainly a well-thought-out, you know, could have been done over the course of the fall. Really lots of opportunity to really talk about what the impact of those cuts would be. And then at the next meeting, when those cuts were presented, it was very much a, oh, wait, we want to add this back in. We want the math tutor. Whoa, gee, now that we've got to take something else out. And it was all just very rushed. And personally, I don't think it's a good way to put together a budget. I'm going to echo what other people have said, that I think we should go back to the original budget as Superintendent Levesque presented, which was essentially a level-funded budget, was very well thought out. Thank you.
Todd Allen from Lee, but also the principal here of the high school. There's a handful of things I would like to try to clarify tonight. First of all, a couple of statements of fact that were presented in some of the comments I'd like to clarify. First of all, we eliminated the secretarial position at the high school that used to support the athletic department as well as the nurse. That's a $43,000 saving to the district right there. That's in this year's budget, so that's going to be money returned to the taxpayers at the end of this budget year, and it's continued in next year's budget. The nurse that we have at the high school is paid according to the pay scale. That's how that rate is determined. She works exceptionally hard, just like all the other nurses in our district do. We have one nurse working with 680 kids. And if you get a chance to go to any of the health offices, any of our schools, they're very busy. So that's that. Second thing I want to clarify, there's some comments made about the long-range projections of enrollment drop-offs. I'd like to clarify that the in... The resident population is projected to go down by 50 students by the year 2021. I think it's important to keep in mind that that includes an eight percent range of error. In other words, about 50 students. So it's just as likely to remain flat over the next 10 years as it is to go down to 582. And that, by the way, does not include the tuition students that we have here. And we do have, based upon the number of tuition students that have signed up so far, we are at 58 Barrington tuition students for next year, and we were projecting 60, and it's still early. So I just put that out for you as something to think about. With regards to what the impact of the loss of an assistant principal will be on the high school, I think it's a false assumption to say that I supported that. Certainly, when presented with the choice of coming up with a half a million dollars in additional cuts, we had to make some hard decisions. And a number of things were considered, and that was one of the things that made it through. It was not, however, something that I suggested initially, and is not something that I personally would recommend at this point. The impacts of the loss of that position could be significant. Number one, I think it's important to realize that we have three administrators supervising 70 professional staff. If you drop it down to two, that means two people supervising 70 professional staff. To look at that from the standpoint of how that plays out, that means one supervisor trying to keep tabs on 35 teachers. Just to give you an idea of what that means, there's roughly 35 teachers in the entire Moheramet School. And that's kind of the range of difficulty in that. And keep in mind that at high school level, the subject areas are much more diverse and require significant more expertise to be able to supervise those things adequately. So that's certainly one thing. The other thing to keep in mind is that we have a very large facility here. 2004, when this building was opened, it more than doubled the physical space of this facility. Supervising kids in a space, regardless of how many are here, it's a very physically large and challenging thing. Additionally, I would challenge you to think about how this... These cuts might impact school-level initiatives moving forward. We don't have curriculum coordinators, so the way in which curriculum work gets moved forward is through our... The two fine young ladies from the central office who facilitate that. But the fact is, the building-level administrators are really the ones sort of like, kind of pushing the process along, in addition to supervising the CINNIE plan, in addition to supervising, which I just want to mention, just as a... Because I'm kind of proud of it. Oyster River High School was just... Made it to the semifinals as a semifinalist for the Excellence in Education Awards this year. So we actually... We get, at the end of this month, we're going to do a presentation to the State Board of Education in hopes of advancing to the next level. So certainly, we're very proud of that. But that's something that one of my assistant principals, Sarah Watton, has had the time to pursue and to really promote that. So I guess, I mean, I could talk for a great length of time, but I guess I just would like to say, certainly, can we manage on a day-to-day basis with one less assistant principal? I'm not going to kid you. I'm not going to tell you the sky's falling and the whole world is going to fall apart. But will we sacrifice something? Yes, we will. And I just would put that out there. But can we make it work if we have to? Yes, we can.
Again, remind you that the school board will be back tomorrow evening in their normal boardroom, making their final decisions on the budget. We also have the deliberative session, February 7th, where we will have more information on our budget that we bring forward. And obviously, at that meeting, there will be lots of discussion and lots of information to share, and you'll have the opportunity to ask questions, and we'll provide you with answers at that session. Thank you.